For those just watching this, hello fellow residents and welcome to our novel Zoom Candidates Forum, coming to you posthaste in fashion. Thanks to our novel coronavirus. My name is Ginny Ayers. I'm president of the Citrus Library Foundation, which is a group of about 13 volunteers whose mission is to ensure the long-term prosperity of our beautiful Citrus Library. If you haven't been hit up by us already for the town construction, now that our Building for the Future Capital Campaign is over, we'll just hit you up again because you love the library and you want to support all the residents it supports. And I'm more importantly here tonight with two candidates who are running for a three-year term on the school board. Janice Lindblom and incumbent and her challenger Elizabeth Liz O'Reilly. Thank you both for not only taking the time to do this crazy Zoom Candidates Forum, but also just stepping forward to do, you know, serve the town. And I know that you all have already in various ways and just want to say thank you for that. It's really important now more than ever and we appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
All right, so this is kind of a new format. We're going to do the best we can. Thank you to Seth Pfeifer from Citrus Community TV who is also graciously recording this. It is not a live Zoom, but it will be posted shortly after we finish. And we will try and share it on as much social media and Citrus TV as we can. Okay, so let me touch briefly on the format. The questions were prepared by the foundation, so the candidates have no prior knowledge of them. The forum is not a debate, so I will just lob the questions out there and you get to answer them. Each candidate will get the same questions. I'll alternate them alphabetically and have one minute to respond. And I will tell you from my, just having done this with the board candidates, one minute is not a long time. So what I'm going to do is, what I did is, I'll just let you know when you hit a minute and just try and wrap it up as quick as you can. I think I was too fast with them. Each candidate will, and I'll alternate who goes first, just doing it alphabetically. But you will each get an opening statement and a closing statement of two minutes each. So, and again, I'll just alternate alphabetically. The moderator is the timekeeper and enforces time responses, but hopefully you won't make me do that. Okay, so let's get started. Let's see, Lindblom gets to go before O'Reilly. So would you like to start with your opening statement? You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you Ginny, the Citrus Library Foundation and SCTV for allowing me to be a part of this Candidates Forum. My name is Janice Lindblom and I'm running for reelection to the Citrus School Committee. I have served now for three years and I hope to continue to serve the students and parents of Citrus Public Schools. I'm a product of the Citrus School System and my three children, including a 2020 Citrus High School graduate. I hope to be reelected and continue a lot of the hard work started during my tenure. The Cushing and Hadley SOI, the field project, working, I hope to work with the new superintendent. And, but more importantly, a lot of the hard work that we're putting into right now to get, to prepare for the 2021 school year. We don't know what education will look like and I hope that come September, we have a great plan in place for all the kids.
Thank you. Awesome. And Liz?
Hi, I'm Liz O'Reilly and I wanted to thank you also for hosting this forum for us, as I'm new to this.
That's mine.
So I wanted to just let you know a little bit about myself. I've been a resident of the Town of Citrus since 1985. I have two children, two sons that graduated, one in '07 and one in '09. During their school days, I was a room mother at Cushing and active also at that time during the Rooms to Grow program, which was the parent group that was involved in getting the Jenkins School built. I was also a founding member with the Citrus Education Alliance, C, which is a similar type organization that is now no longer running to the Citrus Education Fund that's up right now. While my two children were in school and I decided it was time to go back to work a little, I'm a registered nurse. I graduated from Boston State. I started subbing in the public school, back in the school systems. And then in 2008, I was hired as the Hadley School Nurse where I was until last year when I retired. The last three years of my term there, I was the nurse leader for the district. So, let's see. So I feel that coming into this, I have a perspective that people, not everyone has. I was a resident, I was a parent, an employee, and now a retired resident. So I'm hoping that I get to join the school committee and look forward to hopefully doing that.
That's great. That's great. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's get started. Again, Janice Lindblom, you're going to go first. What are your top three priorities for this three-year term? And we're down, we're back to the minute, not the two minutes.
Okay. Well, the top priority currently in moving forward into the next school year is the budget. We are looking at a budget deficit due to COVID. We're not getting as much tax money as we expected and that is true across the country. We're not the only town looking at this crisis. There are lots of towns around us that are making cuts. And my priority is to make sure we don't have to make any cuts in staff. We'd like to, we're working towards doing everything we can to avoid that. And this process will, even if we have a plan right now, it'll, you know, it'll be changing and it's fluid and that will be a priority. It's an ongoing priority. The next priority is to figure out what learning will look like come September 2nd. You know, we don't know what the classrooms will be like. We, you know, we're waiting.
We're sitting in on a minute, so just.
Oh, okay. So we're still, you know, we're, we're waiting for guidance from Desi on what the setup will be for the classes, buses, you know, sports, all those things. And just, the last priority would be just to continue the hard work that, you know, keep ensuring that students have a fantastic education in Citrus Public Schools.
Thank you. That's the hardest question I had on the other one too, to get in in a minute, sorry.
It's not as easy Liz, as you think.
I know. Okay, Liz, top three priorities for your term, would you read?
I have to agree with Janice that I think the budget is the number one. It's probably because we don't want to see anyone have any cuts in any area. The safe opening of the school, whether along with, you know, safely opening it from the health standpoint, but also, as she said, how, if we have to go to distance learning or we have to go to other ways of educating children for safe distancing, what is that going to look like and how can we provide a quality education for everyone? Probably the, another piece that I think along with that would be the social emotional effect of both the pandemic and the racial climate in our country right now, that students would have to, would address those issues as I know the district is starting to already, address those issues going forward. But that I think will be going throughout the summer for everyone.
Right. I'm sure. Thank you. Okay, and that was my big question. That is the question of the day that's on everyone's mind is, you know, what is the impact of the online learning this past spring? I think Citrus maybe got off to a bit of a slow start and how do we, you know, accommodate for that and get everybody up and running and back into it in the fall, if we're back in the fall? Or do we continue online learning? And, you know, how do we, you know, keep that equality and quality and equality in the education within this COVID environment? And Liz, you get to go first this time.
That's a really tough question. As Janice said before, a lot of the direction comes from Desi. So as far as the slow start, some of that was from the Department of Education. I think that knowing and having worked with the staff, that they will work hard all summer long figuring out how to make sure that this is done correctly. They were thrown into it. It's a learning curve. To make sure that everyone gets a quality education is going to be how to make them accountable part because everybody's doing things at different times and parents are working and it's a difficult situation. Hopefully we'll have had a learning curve with this and that they'll be able to develop a better strategy and be able to work through the Department of Education with how to make it equal for everyone. I do know that the teachers have found it very stressful and a lot of work, as has parents and students. And I've heard that from people as far away as New Hampshire, that everyone's in the same situation. So I think we'll see a lot of guidelines come out from the Department of Ed, hopefully to help us with that.
Okay, sure. Yeah, and certainly Citrus isn't alone in this.
Exactly.
Okay, Janice?
I think for quality and equality, I'd like to start off with equality. I think Citrus is lucky that we have resources in place to make sure all of the students that have access to the technology that is needed for distance learning. You know, one thing that didn't, you don't think of is, well, yeah, families have computers, but you don't think, well, they might share one. We were lucky enough that we could have had enough Chromebooks to hand out to families so that each child in the family that was in part of Citrus Public Schools could have that technology. The quality is something, you know, depending on what the guidelines look like in the fall, we might have to change how we, how we look at distance learning, you know, in the rigor, in the accountability of what's expected. The expectations might change. You know, right now, there's, I think there's a little leeway with the, what's expected of the kids to, what they, to do at home and also what the parents are expected to do. I mean, one thing we've heard is that parents are still trying to do their jobs, but they're also trying to be teachers too. So it's a hard, it's a fine line. It's a difficult balance. But I think it's important that, you know, we look at what we've done now to build on if we have to.
Sure. And yes, I have heard that. I mean, I can't imagine being a mom of young children and having to work and teach your kids at the same time. Or a dad. It's not, you know, both. A parent of young children and having to work and teach is brutal.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Let's see. Speaking of budget restraints, they are always a battle every year, even in a good year. And certainly this is maybe not going to be one of our better years. If budget reductions are likely this year, how would you specifically expect to protect the kids' education with fewer resources? And Janice, you get to go first on this one.
That's a tough one. I mean, I know the one thing that we would have, I mean, the last thing we would have to cut is the teachers. So I think we're, you know, again, we're lucky that even if we have to cut back on resources, we have fantastic teachers in place who are able, will be able to teach the standards to the kids in the classroom and without, you know, without all the materials they might need. I think, you know, we'll do whatever we can, but, you know, they're very resourceful and, you know, we'll have, we might have to just work with what we have. But, you know, it would fall on the teachers, but I'm confident that they will be able to continue teaching what they need to teach.
Awesome. Thank you. And Liz?
Yeah. And I know the budget is really tight and everybody's aware of it. And I think that having talked to teachers over the last few months or whatever, everybody is expecting some kind of a cut or, not so much in staffing, but, you know, making concessions with the administration on different items because it's not like other contracts where they're like, oh, here we go again. They want to not give us a raise, but they, everybody's all united that this is a situation that everyone's involved in. And I think that you will find that they will work, as Janice said, with the resources that they have as opposed to maybe some new resources, and they will be creative. I think that, I think everybody realizes we're all in the same boat. And I think that the teachers and the, will work with the administration. I truly believe that from what I'm hearing. So hopefully we can work together and everybody will get the quality education that they expect to get.
Sure. Well, I think that hopefully that's, that's the goal of everyone. And I agree with both of you that we do have a phenomenal staff, a phenomenal group of teachers that are very dedicated to the students. So that's a benefit to Citrus. Okay. So speaking of those additional resources, actually Liz, segue. In recent years, the budget restraints have, you know, forced the schools to share part-time library paraprofessionals and it's been tight. And there's a heavy reliance therefore on the town library, both resources and staff. And, you know, there's a common overlap there, so that makes sense. But without much collaboration, sometimes the results aren't always where they need to be. And how would you propose that the schools and library work better together?
I know that in years past, that they have worked together, that the librarians would come over to the schools and educate the kids on how to use the computer systems, how to research paper, and then give assignments and go and do it. And they would work with the, go over to the library at other times and work with them. So I don't know, maybe with the part-time librarians, things have kind of gone to the wayside. But I do know that at Hadley, I know that they always do the field trip to the library and educate the kids on that and that there's always talk about, you know, incorporating the two together. Because it is a resource that people need to know how to use properly and have access to it. I would see that they would do a collaboration with the librarians just that way. And even some of the older teachers. I know that my own children did library work when they were in Gates, that they had to do assignments and go over to the library and do that type of research or whatever. But it's also a different world than when my kids were there. So it's a whole new world to teach these children how to use technology with the library.
Sure. Okay. Janice?
I think one thing we've heard in the past is, especially with projects that the kids have, I think if there was collaboration with. Like maybe the English department, the English department chair could, you know, work with the library to prepare them for the onslaught of kids who come walking in, looking for the same book. I think that that would be a huge piece, a huge connection, in addition to everything that Liz said. But, um, that, yeah, that's one thing I've heard over, you know, time and time again, that the library, you know, kind of needs to be aware of what the kids will be coming in and looking for.
Right. Yeah. Resources can be made available, but they just need a heads up or some coordinated communication, I think.
Yeah. So they have enough resources for all the kids.
The egg of the kids even, so that not everybody shows up the same day.
Well, exactly. Back to, yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you both. You guys are doing really well, actually. Okay, so this is a tough one. Citrus has been grappling with issues of racial tensions and censorship in the last few years with maybe some teachers self-censoring because they're afraid that the school board or the school administrators wouldn't support them if they use resources that the parents find objectionable. So how would you propose to address this, given that protests are erupting nationwide and our own students are, you know, standing in the common areas and finding their voices for racial equality? What would you, how would you propose this in the schools?
I'm going first this time?
Yes.
Yeah, and under a minute.
Well, do your best. Because you guys have done really well staying in a minute, so we're okay.
So I think we need to, we need to let the education piece of racial equality, leave that up to the teachers in what they choose for the curriculum. That's what they're trained for. And we have to trust that they know what they're, what they're doing, why they're choosing the books they choose. I think as far as, from what I've seen, both, you know, on Citrus monthly and at the Rotary, these kids are craving information. They're craving this discussion. And I think we need to let, listen to them. You know, they're the, they're the ones that are taking the charge in town right now. And we need to listen to them and pay attention to them. This is what they want to learn about. And I think we need to, you know, listen to their voices and not so much, maybe the parents in town. The parents and the, the kids and the teachers, you know, the teachers know what they need to teach and the kids know what they want to, want to learn.
Sure. Thank you.
I could keep going on and on.
Well done. Impressive. No, and I will say, yes, I think everyone is pleased to see the kids finding their voices, which is nice.
Yes. Very proud of them.
Liz?
So I know that the district has, even in the past couple of years, has tried to incorporate more diversity into the education and into activities after school and whatever through our MEKO director. And hopefully, not because this is a good situation by any means, but maybe this is the piece that spurs parents and student involvement in more of these activities. Because I know that she's tried to develop a couple of community activities and they weren't as well-attended as they had hoped. I do know that we've had a horrible time trying to find host parents for our MEKO students. And that's something that would be a great thing to introduce these kids into the district and to also have our kids learn more about their culture and just in talking with them. So I think that we're in the right direction. And I think that as Janice said, the teachers know what to do in these situations. They're up to date. They know how to educate the kids on this. I think that we need to tap resources within the Boston area and within the medical department to help facilitate this far as all. I think that we could really open some good discussions with kids if we do it that way within there and with parents. You know, it's not just up to us to educate children on these issues. It's up to the parents also. But maybe with the collaboration and the nighttime activities and whatever, parents might want to get out nowadays.
Sure. Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. All right. A little easier. Which of the proposed improvements or repairs to the elementary school buildings do you support? And with likely budget reductions, how, what should be done to improve or maintain the conditions of the buildings for the next few years?
Who's first? It's, I worked in one of the elementary schools, so I'm well aware. And my children went to Cushing and they went to Gates before, the old Gates. It's a situation that we know has to be dealt with. We have reapplied, but I'm probably going forward right now with the economy of the state. I don't think we're looking at getting any funding in the very near future. So therefore we have to put our hats on and look in a different direction as to what we're going to do because we're probably a minimum of three to five years out before a new school would be built, whether that be some two small schools or one large school. And I think that therefore we have to put our collective hats on and think of a way to try to make the other schools a little more 21st century than they are. And it's, you know, it's, it's money and you have to think, what are we going to do? What aren't we going to do? But something has to be done to bring these schools up to code, not even code, it's not code. It's more up to the day, day and age. But we do need a new school. I mean, it's back, just like when we were looking at Gates. Nobody denies it. I don't think anybody that's been to any of those, either of those two schools would deny something has to be done in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A hard one.
That is our one.
It is. It will continue to be a difficult answer. I mean, we just submitted, resubmitted the SOI for the Hadley and Cushing schools. You know, we, we lost out this past time and I think one factor was that Boston, the city of Boston was added to the mix. So a lot of the money went to them. Now, you know, with the COVID is affecting even the MSBA funding. So we're not sure what's going to happen this second time around. And if we don't get approved, we have to think about, like Liz said, updating, updating those schools to make it a conducive learning environment for the students that are there. And I, you know, what's tricky is that, and I know if we say we're going to be spending this much money on like Hadley, people will say, well, why are you spending money on Hadley if you're going to tear it down? So.
Right.
I mean, that's now an argument. But we can't just let it fall to pieces either. So it's, you know, you can't win. But hopefully we get approved the second time around with the SOI. And, you know, well, the timing will be right that the town will agree and vote on, you know, fixing, replacing those two schools.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm just looking at the time. We were supposed to be done by 8:15, but I know we got a late start. I'm going to throw out maybe one more quick one, just, I think we can fit it in. Should the school budget cover transportation and sports fees currently charged to users? Kind of a silly question, given all the budget constraints we just talked about.
It should. In theory, the budget should cover it. And that's, in a perfect world, buses would be covered, sports would be covered. Yeah, they should. And we, you know, maybe someday we will figure out a way to work those, those aspects of the budget, of the schools into the budget. I mean, it's kindergarten. It's, you know, kindergarten, kindergarten would be taught the first, the first to be assimilated, absolutely. And then, you know, buses and the sports fees. But yeah, they, they should be. But, you know, in times of budget crisis, it's kind of hard to, we could say, yeah, we'll, we'll cover that, but something else has to give. So, yeah.
Understood. Liz?
I, I agree with her 100%. It's like, it would be ideal if buses were free and sports were free, but right now, it's not going to be happening, you know, because of budget constraints. You know, we need a curriculum before we can say, you know, free kindergarten or whatever. And I would love to see, as she said, kindergarten first. That would be the first. I think, you know, that everybody would agree that that is something that we should be able to do. And then the buses and the athletic fees. So.
Understood. And I, and again, it's kind of a silly question, given the budget constraints. But I, you know, I hope it, it speaks to the fact that there are so many competing interests for a limited number of dollars and you just can't do it all. But I love hearing that kindergarten's first on both your lists. So that's, that's great. Okay, so in the interest of time, we are at the point where I am going to give you each an opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement. And Liz, you get to go first this time.
Okay, so well, thank you for letting me come on and let me answer your questions. I hope that I've given the perspective that I have and hopefully the people will think about voting for me for this. We have a whole new administration starting, you know, we have new principals and new superintendent. And I think that it's a time of a refreshing change in the district and a new challenge for a lot of people. And I would like to be a part of that new change. So that's all.
That's great. Thank you so much. And Janice?
Thank you. Thank you Ginny, the Library Foundation and SCTV, and Liz, for being a part of this. So when you get elected to school committee, there's no training. There's no, there's no college you go to to study how to be in a school committee. So I've been at this for three years and I would like to continue what I have learned over the past three years into the next three years to take us to, you know, to keep, to keep working on the projects that we've started. I'd love, you know, I'd love to work with the new superintendent. I'd like to see the SOI be approved and work towards two new schools, or one new school. And I just hope that the people of Citrus can see that even though there is a lot of change, I think having some stability at the top is helpful too. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Again, thank you both, not only for your time tonight and this crazy one-minute fire-off-a-funny-answer, not funny, funny, two funny questions. But thank you for stepping forward when other people step back. So, you know, the town very much appreciates you both given hours of your time already. And I hope that regardless of which of you wins, you will continue to be involved because the town needs you both. You're both very gracious in this. Thank you. All right. And I do want to use this opportunity to remind anybody who is, did not hear the first half that the election is on June 13th and early voting is already underway, which is why we kind of rushed this in. It is not too late. You can pick up a ballot at the town hall on the steps. You can fill it out there and put it in the mail slot, or you can download it online and mail it in or drop it in the mail slot. They will mail you a ballot. You just have to have it, do it in time to get the ballot back by Thursday prior to the election on Saturday, the 13th. That's a week from this Saturday. by Thursday prior to the election on Saturday, the 13th. That's a week from this Saturday. So, and of course, there is voting in person at Cituit High School, but it is from 9:00 AM till 2:00 PM. So people should be aware that it's a shorter timeframe than under normal circumstances. So, let's see, is anything else? And yep, I think we've covered it. The Cituit Community TV, thank you very much. They will be posting this likely around nine o'clock tonight. And we will try to get it out on the foundation website and links and social media everywhere we can get it. Tell all your friends. So I think you guys did a great job. It's great to have an opportunity to, as short as it is, get, see what you're, where you come from and what you bring to the job. And again, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.